Okay, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-five P M. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
We do not have any additions or corrections.
You? Uh, we need to adopt the agenda as presented this evening. Do I have a motion?
So moves.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda presented this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries. Letter C is introduction of Anna Hartman from Southeast High School. Uh, student representative to the board and administer the oath of office.
Tell me, tell me job.
Good. Great hand. Be after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law relating to my election or appointment.
That I have not knowingly violated any law related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with the double.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with the double.
Okay, we'll move down to letter D, information and proposals. Uh, number one, Doshen County School District, number one, full accreditation from Wyoming Department of Education for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
And that's just our notification of accreditation through the process to the Wyoming Department of Education. Get that yearly after submission of materials and information uh to them for that accreditation process.
Okay, and number two is our reports from student representatives to the board.
I'll let them speak. We had the topic of A C T. For our student reps and they're gonna give us a little bit of feedback on the A C T prep. And how they feel and how their classes feel about the A C T that our juniors will be taking here in the upcoming weeks.
Hi, I'm Madison Copelandberger. I'm the representative for twenty-two high school. In order to um really get the full picture of how all the students feel in twenty-two school, I sent out a survey for all of them to fill out. These were just basic questions that I had multiple choice answers for, and we just went based off that. The first question was, do you think you were prepared for the A C T on March twenty-sixth? Ten percent answered yes, very, very, very prepared. Eighty percent responded sort of prepared and ten percent said not prepared. Our next question was, do you think your classmates slash friends feel prepared for the A C T? Ten percent said yes, very prepared, thirty percent said sort of prepared, and sixty percent said not prepared at all. Next, we had a question asking to check all things that your teachers slash school has done to prepare you for the A C T. The different um answers that they could have given are vocabulary study, writing prompts, additional math instruction, additional reading instruction, additional science instruction, given a practice A C T, use of timers, and use of bubble tests. Our highest answer was eighty percent with given a practice A C T and our lowest answer was zero percent additional science instruction. Then we asked, have your teachers helped you prepare for the A C T this year? Twenty percent said yes. Ten percent said no, and seventy percent said sort of. Lastly, we just, we opened it up and asked what things could your school have done to help you feel more prepared for the A C T? Most people said more practice, more practice A C Ts. Um, give us five minutes study time, maybe during laser time, which we have every single day around in between our second and third period. I simply believe that there are a lot of answers saying that the juniors feel sort of prepared or not prepared. I think this is based off of lack of practice A C Ts and just stuff in the classroom. I think that this could be fixed with just a little bit of study time each day and I think that our juniors are gonna perform very well. I think that we're a smart class and we're gonna alter our best.
Thank you.
I'm Loudon Bremer. I'm the representative for L F L. Um, our prompt was um basically readiness um from our class as well as ourselves and how we feel about the A C T. Um, so um kind of the first overlying question was, do your classmates feel prepared for the A C T? Um, I asked, I sent out a a group message to our class group chat and uh twenty classmates responded and twenty of them responded with uh no. Um, they, it was, it was kind of a consensus that they didn't really have any idea of testing dates kind of until two weeks prior um to the A C T. Um, it was said that there wasn't super specific practice. Um, and the practice media that we do use um has been found to be flawed sometimes. Um, sometimes they give us the wrong answers, that's correct answers, and sometimes the online documents that we use don't work. So ultimately, we don't get as much as we could out of the time that's delegated for that. Um, that kind of goes into the next question is what has your school done to help prepare? Um, every Wednesday, we've actually adopted something new. Um, the entire middle school and high school takes just a ten-question quiz. Um, every, every, but every student gets the same thing, but it's all um geared back to A C T test. Um, and it's just on one of the A C T subject areas. So one week, the ten questions could be on an English subject and math subject, um, a science subject, and then that gives us immediate results. So as soon as you're done take, taking that, you can see how you did. Um, I think that that's super good um that, that we have adopted that because that is giving us more opportunities um for growth. Um, and then some things um that was, that was kind of cumulative from the um, the questions that I asked the class. Um, what things could the school have done better? Um, they said more specific subject area learning. Um, it was kind of noted that we didn't have a whole bunch of practice in science. Um, me personally, um, I'm involved in taking college classes and some of those college classes, um, just from talking to upperclassmen and teachers on, on what subject matter would be on the A C T. Um, some of the college classes that I've taken have gotten me kind of prepared from that, but I know that there's a whole bunch of other junior, of my junior classmates that uh, that aren't doing that. Um, so I think that kind of um helps me to feel a little bit more prepared, but I know that as a whole, um, it's, it's kind of obvious that um, we're not all as well-prepared as, as we could be. So um, that's kind of what I gathered.
Thank you.
I'm Anna Hartman. I'm the student representative from Southeast and I don't have a paper, but I have spoken to the majority of my classmates. And while none of them feel super confident, they're all nervous, it's big test, and we all know that. They mostly fall into two categories. One, they feel like they've been prepared and they've had opportunities and they've taken advantage of those opportunities. Most of our teachers have given us practice A C T questions and tests in class. In science, majority of us have done something on what strategies you can use in math, frequently seeing them as part of spiral review in daily work. Um, and then in English, we also practiced one at the very beginning of the year. The other half of the class felt that while they had these opportunities, they hadn't utilized them as well as they could have and were nervous because they hadn't done that. Um, but overall, just nervous, but feel like they can do it and they will be okay.
Thank you.
One question on there that I did have was, um, when you kind of were thinking about this, what one of those things that kind of stick out? What's that, what's that next step that you guys think that we, we could really address very quickly and easily that might have the biggest impact?
Um, I think it's obvious that the, that the staff at Lingle are working to better our A C T scores um by kind of adopting this new program that they have. Um, I think it's just gonna take, I don't know about immediate results because it's gonna take time to make sure that this actually works and things like that. I know other schools like Burlington High School, they have a, a whole bunch of numbers that show that this has helped them a bunch. Um, so I think that it's super exciting um for the outlook for our school. I think that if we keep uh maintaining what we're doing with that, maybe even adding a little bit more um in terms of volume of, of uh having us take those kinds of things, I think that would help up, that would help a lot more than maybe just one, one a week.
I think for uh Burlington High School and specifics, I think we should start at the very beginning of the year. Like at least two weeks in taking a practice A C T where all the juniors are required to take it. I think that this would help simply because it would keep it in our heads that it's coming up and we had to look forward to it. I think what would also help is just current and frequent reminders that it's coming up. I know as Loudon said, a lot of the juniors got out three weeks ago that we're taking it on the twenty-sixth, and a lot of them got nervous. I think that we just need some more frequent reminders and some more practice.
Uh, Southeast, I know they've, they've added into the science curriculum where we're common to take these practice questions and then it counts towards your scores. Um, but maybe adding a little bit into the push along if they fit it or starting with younger and ten grade, at the very end of the year where they're looking for a junior year, they know it's gonna come up, just to get it started sooner.
Thanks guys, appreciate your time.
Okay, number three is an update on Project Aware by community project manager Christina Ballington.
Well, as um you stated, I'm Christina Ballington, the community project manager for Project Aware. Um, I've included some information in your packets on page fifteen if you would like to follow along. Um, just as a reminder, the purpose for Project Aware is to provide the school-based mental health services with parental consent, substance abuse education, violence and bullying prevention education, and family engagement. Um, please feel free to stop me if you have questions as I present. In our school-based mental health services, as of March first, we've had fifteen students receiving services. Um, five are awaiting intake and twelve were refused and or no contact from the parent, and six have been completely discharged from the program. The federally standard access to care is twenty-eight days from when someone is requesting care until when they actually see a clinician. And so the average number of days from our hurdle to intake for Project Aware is eighteen days. So we're well above the twenty-eight day um standard to care. There's many counseling services in our community and I collected information from the local providers just requesting if they would reply. I got three um organizations that returned my phone calls or emails, and out of those three that replied, they said that they have a hundred and forty-eight clients that they're receiving, see, that they are seeing, and there are three organizations that are age five to eighteen. Um, also within collecting some more data within our school setting, the school counselors and social workers um within the district know of a hundred and eighty-six students receiving counseling either during the school day or outside of the school day. Um, an additional resource that's provided with Project Aware is Care Solus. Um, it's a free statewide service connecting Wyoming students, families, and school district staff with mental health care providers locally and nationally. Um, so Care Solus is a care coordination service that connects individuals with provider options. Um, but it does so more efficiently and quickly because on the average, it takes an individual making seventy calls or over four to five weeks to be matched with a mental health provider. So Care Solus typically matches individuals in need with providers within a week, and then within our Project Aware services, we've had up to parent referral on a Monday, and then we uh, we had a kid seeing a therapist on a Tuesday. So our access to care and getting kids in crisis to see a therapist is um at a really good rate. Um, if you would like more information about Care Solus or how to get involved under Project Aware um at the school district website under the mental health resources, both of those are um on the district website. Um, along with Care Solus, we've had seventeen anonymous referrals. So assuming those came from the school district website, people click on them and anonymously search. Um, just with the project aware, there's a lot of data collection. And so um, we've also had two warm handoff cases in which we can see all of the contact that is made between Care Solus and the person requesting services. And that was for when we had students request services on our project where parents were also interested in receiving counseling, but since Project Aware is just a school-based, um, this is another avenue we have for adults in our community to seek help. Um, some other initiatives throughout the grant that I've been doing is handing out comment, column strips, which I provided, um, they should have been on the tables there if you would like to take one when you leave. Um, with the assistance of the I T department, I have made Facebook posts to share knowledge about mental health. Um, I made handouts on coping strategies and handed those out to all of the buildings. And then there's also um information out at parent-teacher conferences in the fall, and then um also I'll be doing that this spring. I think there's even one so far prior to this. Um, and then looking forward for the rest of the school year, um, I'll be teaching youth mental health first aid to all the staff. Um, this is a short-time adventure that we're going on to get staff trained, and so there will be two training sessions that I will provide for the remainder of this school year. Um, and this is a requirement for the grant. Um, youth mental health first aid is designed to prepare teachers, school staff, parents, and family members how to help an adolescent who's experiencing a mental health or addiction challenge or is in crisis. It gives teachers a five-step action plan for helping young people in crisis and non-crisis situations. Um, something else, um, just in the last couple of weeks, Trina and I attended a meeting in the community with various stakeholders. Um, DFS, the district attorney, sheriff, police, the volunteers of America, and banner health were there. Um, the purpose of this meeting and all of the stakeholders involved is to support youth in the county for continuity of care after a crisis. The statistics of youth in our community are staggering for kids that risk for suicide. Um, the funding for Project Aware will not continue past December of twenty-twenty-four. We're working with Path Wellness Solutions who currently provides our um therapy in the school day to determine how to continue these without the grant. Um, the need for mental health services is probably in our community and awareness and reducing the stigma is still a challenge. Um, also on April second, I would invite all of you to attend. Um, the J C K Foundation is going to be here to present to all students um nine through twelve in the district. Um, a parent night all will also be held on April second, and then um the J C K is coming to provide reduces. They, their presentation is about reducing mental health stressors, um, addressing mental health awareness, um, and the stigma associated with it. Um, and they're here to support us and our faculty and our um parents. So if you can make it, April second, at the T H S auditorium at ten A M is when they will be presenting to all ninth through twelfth graders, and then the parent night um will be here at six-thirty on April second. Are there any questions?
Can you talk about discharging, you know, what does, from the educational realm, that typically is more reserved than that? What, and you just certainly brought it to specifics, but when I hear that word of discharge, what, what does the connotation behind that mean?
Um, so generally speaking, in therapy clinical services, if um the therapist and the client agree on a mutual cessation um of treatment, if the goals of the treatment have been resolved, or if the services are no longer needed or requested by the parent.
And then you had said this very brilliantly, I should have just written it down, um, but what was the total number of, of served? I just want to make sure everybody hears that.
Um, as of March first, there is fifteen students receiving services.
And those, those students were not receiving services in any other shape, any other way prior to this program.
Correct, yes. Um, it would be a conflict of interest for someone to have a outside therapist at a local organization and then also see our therapist through Project Aware.
Thank you.
Um, with that, just something else that we partnered with is our therapist is a um certified addiction specialist, and we have partnered with the police department. So if a student may receive some type of substance use ticket, the parents are given the option to um instead of paying the fine and the ticket for the, for the city or the county, whatever it is, then they can have the option to come to a minimum of three therapy services within a program, which generally speaking is at very minimal cost to the family. And so we've also um had that be a success as well.
Thank you very much. We will move to number four, which is school presentation and artwork in order by Southeast Schools.
So I'm Amanda Fogel. I am the school counselor at Southeast and the Grange Schools. And um, I'm excited to be here tonight talking to you guys a little bit about the leader in me, um, programs that we've been doing at Southeast Schools. Um, we have just began this program uh this year. We started out uh finding some of the booklets. Uh, the Seven Habits is based on Franklin Covey's um Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. And they have a complete curriculum that um teaches those skills uh K through twelve. And so we ran into this as we were trying to look for something that was both applicable to um building some social emotional skills in our students, uh, but also to build those career and college readiness skills in students because, you know, those two things lie hand in hand if a student is going to be successful when they go out in the workplace. And so when we found this uh leader in me uh program, then, you know, that kind of melded all of that good information into one place where we could teach them those skills that are gonna make them successful employees and successful members of our community and make themselves successful while they are going through school and get the most out of it that they can. And so um, we had a connection to uh Baird Schools, their leader in me uh school district there. And they had really integrated it in, and we'd heard some great things about how that had uh permeated their culture and really kind of turned things around and allowed them to come together as a school and really build a strong program. So uh, beginning of this year, our staff went through uh beginning training of it. And um, so that we as staff uh could learn those different seven habits and start to integrate those into our lives, um, which is really kind of that foundational key. Because honestly, if, if I can't be on top of my time, if I can't be a good role model in those skills, then, you know, it's, it's tough for me to expect for students to do the same thing. And so it started with that staff training where we started to learn about those um seven habits. And um, then we started to, to do some of those uh lessons within our school district. So I'm gonna share my screen real quick here. I forgot that that's what I was gonna do, so I apologize for that. All right, so uh, to start the year, we uh started having some of these uh lessons within our classrooms. And uh, to give you just a little bit of an overview of what the seven habits are, um, we have got the first habit, which this is really our focus at this point in time, is the habit of being proactive. Um, all of our habits within the Seven Habits curriculum, they have uh, we talk about the paradigm shift that needs to happen for someone to be successful in that area, so that base foundational thinking that we have. Um, in the area of being proactive, we're looking at that idea that we're in charge, we're in charge of what we're doing um and how I choose to move forward. Uh, the common paradigm there is that just the way things are, and there's not much I can do about it, so that feeling of powerless there. Um, but then understanding that I am free to choose and I'm ultimately responsible for my happiness, like I have control over that. So there's um a lot of talk about that concept of my circle of control. I get to choose my weather, so I get to choose how I approach every single day that, that I come into. So um, they have these fun little videos. I, I'd like to show you one of them. It's kind of a fun way of illustrating some of the concepts here, so this is a being proactive video here.
Hey, so Manny and I have both come prepared today with examples of proactivity. You ready?
Yeah, I was proactive all weekend and that's why I came prepared.
Okay, well, proactivity is more than just being prepared.
Yeah, but it's a part of it and that's the part I focused on and that's why I'm prepared.
Okay, so you've heard the phrase, when life gives you lemons, make lemonade.
Yeah.
So give me an example of a lemon.
Um a bad breakup.
Okay, so take uh this one. Okay, all right, now put that in your mouth, please.
This is my bad breakup?
Yeah, there it is. So now what are you gonna do with that lemon? Are you gonna squish up your face and start complaining being like, oh, I hate lemons. My life is hard. Nothing's fair. Or are you gonna take the bad situation and think about your options? Consider what you could possibly do and make some, I don't know, some nice sweet lemonade.
That was terrible. How come I had to suck on a lemon?
Oh, you seem irritable.
Yeah.
See, that's what reactive people do. They suck on the lemon, they get annoyed, they get frustrated, and they're generally unpleasant to be around. Whereas a proactive person makes tasty lemonade.
This is our example?
Mm hmm.
Okay, I got a better one. It's my turn. Let's go outside.
Let's do it.
All right, Clark, this is you. You are reactive. Okay, and as you can see, I am proactive. Now, before we begin, I put the goggles on, safety first.
Okay, are you the only one that gets goggles?
Yeah, because I read ahead. All right, now, life is gonna shake you up. Okay, so give me some examples of that.
Ah, you lose your job. Okay, shake it. Your best friend moves across the country.
Yep.
All right, your family will not listen to you.
A hundred percent. Okay, now open it.
Okay.
See, that's reactive. It's gonna build up until you eventually explode and it's not gonna be pretty for you or the people around you. See, I'm proactive. I'm like this water. I get shaken up too, but I have strategies in place that are gonna help me deal with my situations. So I'm just like this water. I'm cool, I'm calm, and I'm refreshing.
You uh you win.
Yeah, I know. So you guys be proactive.
I think that's probably the just the idea of being proactive and we've spent a lot of time on that first habit, you know? And I honestly, like I hear the the vocabulary in the hallways. Like I'll hear kids walking down the hallway saying, well, that was a pretty reactive response there. You know, so for them to pick that up and start relating to that already, I I think is testament to how that connected to them. You know, really, it it just for us to be able to move ourselves from that sense of powerlessness to having some control and power over what it is that we do is huge for kids. So um so some pretty fun stuff there. The the videos are kind of goofy, but they sure catch kids' attention there. So um our kids do a lot of projects and things in the classroom. This is an example of a sixth grader's um project on looking at the object of going to school, right? What's in my control when I go to school? What's outside of my control when I go to school? And so, you know, having them take a look at that in depth is pretty powerful for them. Um also, this is an example, uh first semester, I taught a class each day to our eighth graders. And we went into depth into these seven habits. And um this is one of the examples where they went through and they identified some self regulation strategies that they can use. So when they have uh bumps and things that happened to them along the way, you know, what are some of those good strategies that they can use to help them get through that? And really choose that proactive response versus a reactive response. So a big part of that is really just putting a pause in there, even if we can give it like two seconds to let our brain catch up to our emotions, then it makes a big difference in how we respond to a situation. Uh the second habit is beginning with the end in mind. And just last week, we worked on creating a mission statement. So we want to know where we're heading. You know, we don't see any purpose to what we do day to day, day in, day out in the school setting. There's not a lot of investment in that. And so looking at, you know, where is my end going to be? You know, what am I working towards day in and day out when I am uh working in school, working in sports? And so these are some examples of submission statements that students created. Um we also did some goal setting. So this week we started looking at setting is that mission statement is our overarching like umbrella that we living that we're living towards. Um taking those short steps that are gonna get us there. And then also work towards that long term planning that's gonna be that little pathway that we take in order to get that to that overall mission that we're looking at. Um I thought that these were great. You know, this is is an example of a tenth graders um short term and long term goals uh to do well in their job and make five hundred dollars a month. I mean, that's a great start to that kind of goal setting. And then long term goal was to win a state championship in basketball. And if you look at some of those strategies, I mean, that's pretty thoughtful thinking there, I think, for a sophomore um to come up with those steps that he really wants to work toward and and see how those things connect. Like, it's good to see how those things connect there. Um this is an example of one of our seniors. Um his short term, excuse me, short term and long term goals there as well. Um you know, and this one influenza got me, so I'm sorry if I start start copying. Um you know, this is definitely one of those kids. He's an example when it comes to setting those goals for himself and what he's been able to achieve through doing that. So um you know, you look at the conciseness of this from a sophomore to a senior, you know, that really uh it's nice to see that grow in kids here. So and then this is a a project that we did in my guidance class. And um basically, we kind of mapped out, like we did a treasure map of where we wanted to go. And these were super fun because the kids kind of dug in and, you know, we had to think about like, okay, what classes am I gonna take in high school? Because the these are examples of sixth graders. But what classes do I want to take in junior high or in high school that match what my career goals are? Um what kind of work do I want to do outside of school that might give me some skills to help me um build us a better career or a future there? You know, what am I shooting for as far as like my my vacation goals are? Or where do I want to live? Where do I want to go to college? And so um we had kids kind of map out what they thought that that plan was going to be as they went through school. So some of them are great. They're like, I'm retiring at thirty, you know, fantastic. You tell me how to do that too, and I'll be right there with you. But um those are really fun. The kids really dug into that, had a great time with it. But I think it helps them see that future for themselves. So um the concept of putting first things first. You know, that's hard. That's hard for a lot of us. Like, they want to decide whether I'm gonna spend an hour on my phone or am I gonna do my homework first? Right? And so that idea of just really, where am I spending my time? Uh when we did the training this summer, they there's four quadrants that you look at and it's based on importance and then um I'm blinking. Import importance and urgency. And you know, I figured out that really my summer probably consisted of about ninety percent not important, not urgent, you know? So evaluating our own use of time and how we do those things too. So um the idea of think when when that everybody that when we're working with solutions and uh working with our peers, working in the classroom, finding that way to find a win win where everybody gets something out of that situation. And uh what I loved about the concept too is it talks about how if I can't get a win win, it's probably better to walk away than it is to come up with some sort of win lose or lose lose or lose win kind of scenario. Because then any of those other ones, when there's somebody who's losing, I'm breaking a friendship, I'm breaking a relationship. I'm probably setting myself back as well because I've not utilized uh my best attempt to try to get the best out of a situation. So um the fifth habit is to seek first to understand and then to be understood. You know, just that concept of listening first. Trying to understand perspectives. You know, that's that's tough for kids to do that perspective taking, to understand and really not listen for how I want to respond, but to listen to understand what it is that um we're trying to get out of it. Uh next one is synergize. So how we just work together, if we are able to put all of our talents together, we're gonna grow so much faster and so much higher than we would if we tried to do it independent each of each other. And then lastly, um sharpening the saw. Um and that's just those ways for us to balance ourselves. You know, so we want to balance our mind. We want to take care of our mind. We want to take care of our body. We want to take care of our heart and our soul. And so how we make sure that we put that in our life and build ourselves up too. You know, a lot of people give and give and give and give and give and work for everyone else. But they don't take that time to strengthen themselves up and you just can't fill anybody else's glasses if you have an empty bucket. And so you know, that idea of really taking care of ourselves and um doing the best that we can for ourselves. So um part of our uh leader in me, it includes a measurable measurable results assessment, the MRA. And we took this assessment with our students and our staff, our seven through twelve students and staff uh beginning of January. So we really only implemented a few of the lessons um getting a foundation in this. Um but this really looks at kind of our baseline of where we're at as a school. Uh the scores that you see up here are combined scores. So that's our students and our staff's responses combined together. Um when you're looking at the scales here, um fifty to a sixty nine means that that's an area that needs improvement. Um seventy to seventy nine is satisfactory. And so, you know, we're we're just right there in that mid range. You know, there's there's lots of growth that we could do through implementing this program. Um in your packets that are handed out to you, though, there is a much more specific breakdown where you can see um in each of those categories. Um it talks a little bit about um leadership, so like what leadership looks like in our building. Um that general culture, so how supportive, how safe it feels within our just within our school. Um and then academics. Um a big part of the uh seven habits is student ownership of learning. Right? And student directed learning. And so where they look at that, like, what do I want to take out of this course? What are the best things that are gonna help me, you know? And then I hear you guys talk about like ACT. I mean, not like stoked about the ACT, but you know, like what what could you do to build that, those skills in yourself, right? So that you're building yourself to success. And when students recognize that, that feedback is great. And it's taking back control of the classroom, like this is what we need to get here. And so um I think as we continue to dig into this, this is a really nice baseline and I'm I'm glad that we're at least in the sixties, you know, I mean, that's not terrible, you know, there's definitely room for growth there. Um but this is a really nice breakdown that we can use then to continue to measure our progress with the implementation of this program here. So um we have lighthouse teams at both the elementary and the secondary sides of the building. And these students were chosen by staff um for their leadership abilities. And they meet periodically and really kind of look at what we can do in the building to help continue to build those habits, how we can be successful. Our high school leadership team um definitely has had a lot of pull in how we've moved forward, that they helped us rework our schedule when it was a little out of whack. Um they talk a lot about our rules and um how people treat each other and how we just build those things within our school. And they've had a lot of influence on um, you know, some of the policies and regulations that we've had so far. And so it's a nice opportunity for them to get involved in that uh leadership side of things. Um have some cute quotes from kids. I mean, like, seven habits helps kids gain confidence and also helps show you that you're a good person. Um everyone's been getting along better because I learned about being uh because I learned about being more proactive, I'm more likely to say something when I hear people being mean to others. I mean, that in and of itself, I think, is worth its weight in gold, that kids feel that empowerment to be able to speak up when they see that things are wrong and they know that they're gonna be supported in that. Um and then it helps me pay attention to not mess around from the second graders. Thought that was cute. Um so we're we're continuing to to meet and build. It's definitely one of those things where, you know, it takes time to fully implement this program. Like, we've really only cracked the surface of the resources and the curriculum that we have available to us within the website. So um truly like our junior high high school, we're only on the second habit. And it's it's we're just trying to dig in deep and get a good understanding of that instead of just surface value it and, you know, not really spend that time getting to know it. So um it's definitely a work in progress, but I I feel like it's been a nice addition to our our school. Um and like I said, you know, I just I already hear the impact of the common vocabulary throughout the school and the things that we've seen in students. So have questions or?
So how many weeks, how many weeks uh curriculum is it?
I it's there's um they they have enough for the entirety of the school year.
But how many per uh session, how many minutes?
Oh, okay. So right now what we're doing is we're meeting once a week. Is that what you're asking, really?
So then so then how much how much time do they actually say you should spend on like habit one and habit two?
There there's not a set amount of time for each habit necessarily. Um they have them broken down into uh the lessons. There's about six or seven components of each habit that you meet on. Um the way that we're doing at the at the junior high and the high school, um I have all the girls in one group and Mr. Williams has all the boys in another group. And we meet about twenty five minutes a week right now. And, you know, I've kind of found that it's in order to get the good conversation out of it, like we're going a little slower than probably what the pacing looks like within their courses. Um just because I think, you know, I I want kids to actually like think about it and digest it and use it a little bit versus like skim over the top of it. So um there's courses for each grade level, have their own technical course. We've kind of taken the entirety of like the first introductory course for the high school level and we're doing that with seven twelve right now, just to give them a good foundation in it. But there's a different force, like as we get going and more efficient with it and get that foundation kind of built there. Um there there's technically a seventh grade course, eighth grade course, and then there's four high school courses that become a little bit more. It kind of goes from a broad overview of the seven habits to the fourth one is very much focused on that career readiness. So it integrates these um habits into how I'm gonna be successful using those in a job versus like in a school setting. So it makes it a little bit more um occupation specific. So
Good curriculum.
Yeah.
Very good.
Can I ask why the decision was made to split them, boys and girls? Um number one, just to kind of get that conversation started, like to make it smaller group, because we did have them as a whole group. And then we kind of broke it into classrooms and we found that that wasn't working as well consistency wise. And so then um Mr. Williams and I wanted to kind of give one message and then have them work. And so that was kind of our split because we thought if we could talk a little bit more specifically to life as a teenager, like girls kind of is a different realm. We could have a little different conversations with girls about things than maybe boys would be interested in. It's kind of a starting place. So but kind of kind of to focus those conversations in a little bit more specific to their interests and um needs there. So
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Today, we will now move down to letter E, public forum for this evening, and I do not have any slips in front of me. So we will move down to letter F, recommended actions. Um number one, the consent agenda. Are there any items on this consent agenda that any member would use to poll this evening?
Chris?
Oh, yeah, I have a question. I have a couple of questions on.
So, okay, so you you want to poll even Chris?
Yeah, H, I think we need to make a correction. So we approve it correctly. I think we just
Okay. Are there any other items on the consent agenda that any member would use to poll this evening? Okay. With that, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda this evening uh without letter E or letter H, please signify by sending aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? I don't carry this. Okay, we will now move to letter E, which is accept grant from the Community Healthcare Foundation and the amount of point six thousand eight hundred and eight dollars for the purchase of vape detectors at TMS, THS and Flat River Schools.
Okay, my question on that one, I was just wondering how they work. It looks like they're going in the bathrooms and in the locker rooms. And I didn't know if they're like a smoke alarm that went off and scouted off or how that.
Mike, will you again and talk about a little bit about this, because you kind of have the technology side of this a little bit more in detail than I do.
Yeah, so uh they are basically just like this smoke detector, they sit on your ceiling, on your wall. Uh they detect that substance, and then they, the ones that we have, uh. And and these ones, as far as I know, send this out uh online to a specific platform. And then, uh, we can set it up so that. The parties interested or the schools can receive uh email, texts, or app notifications. But they can kind of check in on this and see if that's gonna happen.
Is this like a trial since we just didn't find him or did we understand?
So, what was involved in the grant process through the community foundation handling? That's I'll say that was heavily involved in this in a role of cer- certified regimen specialist. Um was applied for the Torrance School at this time. There was not an interest at the time of the application. For Lingo, Fort Laramie, or Southeast, uh they are welcome to uh kind of move forward and they might wait and see this. We did just recently, we did uh have a different device that we were going to go with. And then Mike and his work with some of our other security uh measures and in reevaluating our security systems. Uh found ones that were slightly cheaper and actually could integrate with our other uh systems. And so, you know, we had a nice integration process as we kind of moved forward. But it's it's a, we have had at T H S in the past, uh these detectors. So this is not anything new for T H S, other than the fact that they had exceeded their lifespan. And so they needed to be replaced, and so we will be functioning again at Torrance High School. And then, of course, it will be introduced at P R S and T M S.
And I believe the lifespan is ten, ten years?
Correct, ten year lifespan.
And Mr. Carter, did I hear you're uh correct that Southeast and Lingo were not interested in?
At this initial phase, yes, this initial time, they they didn't have an interest in participating in this grant through the community foundation. But there may be an interest at a later date, once they see how that integration works within the other facilities.
And so do Southeast and Lingo have an alternative detector?
Right now, they do not.
Oh, just thinking, um. Say a student got, this thing went off, the message got sent to principal or Dana students or whoever. And they're found guilty, is this? Is it, is that, could it be punishable by law in the sense it's?
So it's, so tobacco use by anyone under the age uh of legal age. Could potentially result in a citation in addition to to school discipline, correct? Did I answer your question or did you have?
No, I was thinking, I mean, that's, but that's, say that happens, is that just left up to someone to decide if they are gonna?
So in our policy, that anytime that we have a student possession of any of those items, it's in our policy to also notify law enforcement. And anytime that we believe that there has been a law broken.
So Mike, how do, how do they work then? Like, are they like?
So I I have a demo version stood up at T H S and want to pull it up and kind of show you.
Sure. Well, because I'm just curious, like, with Dylan's question, like, does it video who it is? Like, does it, like, how do you know?
So, so that's the whole point around integrating the rest of our security systems is uh gives you that contextual data. So, when we integrate cameras uh that are on the same brand, same platform. Uh you can gain, you know, the the timeline, you get uh in the platform, you can pull up. That specific incident on that vape sensor and then also see the cameras from that time. Or even up to that time, to tell how many people or who was within, because we can't report anything about.
Right.
So, we can see then who all is in there. Uh, we can't narrow it down to any one specific, but then in the logic, you should know who was all at.
Yeah, thank you.
And a indication of one going off doesn't automatically describe guilt also. It just initiates the investigation process for the principal, just as in any other situation that might involve. Uh a student disturbance in the hallway would initiate an investigation process, but does not automatically assume guilt on any party.
These, I'm sure they do, but do they tech all kinds of smoke or is this just out of vape cartridge?
They detect cigarettes, tobacco, um, yeah, all all sorts of stuff. Within that one realm that they call it. Uh, the sensors often detect uh C O two, uh noise. The the idea behind noises is to identify uh violence, fights, those sorts of things. Uh, they identify tampering, the way you mess with the device, so.
I know. And Lynette Saseo is on Zoom also, and I'll just give her a moment to talk to the prevention side of that also. Lynette, uh, if you want to speak, go go ahead.
Thank you, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I've never been accused of people not being able to hear me. Um, so I think it's really important kind of to. Um, Mr. Hager's point and question is that um enforcement is an element of this. But I think in the meetings that I have had with um school district folks. And also with members of the Community Healthcare Foundation. We know that vaping is seriously on the rise and very prevalent with our youth. And we also know that preventing early initiation of nicotine. Can also um really help health outcomes down the road and as well as addressing. How kids are handling situations in the school, how they're doing academically, all those kinds of things. So I think it's important to note that this is not a gotcha. This is a being able to recognize how prevalent this issue is in our schools. But we have also done a lot of research into different programs that are available for students. The American Lung Association has two different programs, um one called NOT, which is not on tobacco. The other one is in-depth. They're both um in-depth is a sort of a diversion type program. An alternative to um suspension. NOT is a more intense program for youth who may be having a hard time stopping using nicotine. And so, this is just something in conjunction with that, prevention dollars. Through the Comprehensive Community Coalition can pay for that programming, prevention dollars cannot pay for vape detectors. And so that's where the Community Healthcare Foundation came in as far as being able to cover the cost of that.
Also, something pertinent to this is some changes in policy that we have, we're coming in the rest of the agenda. That you'll notice also on some policy changes in regards to wording and things to uh meet the meet the requirements or expectations of the grants.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase exceeding our, I'm sorry, accepting the grant from the Community Health Care Foundation. The amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and eight dollars for the purchase of vape detectors at T M S, T H S, and P R S. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Uh, letter H was also pulled, and it is approve the purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for custodial supplies for Trail Elementary. In the amount of five thousand nine hundred dollars and eleven cents. And for T H S, in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-two cents from Love's Facility Solutions. And the total amount of uh says here fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two thirty-two. Um, I think that's where the uh, what we need changed, uh so I. Christian, you're gonna say the math, I go next quickly, I. I got twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents.
All three, do you have to make a motion or can we just change? Let's make a motion with that amount in in that.
Then I will make a motion that we change the total on H from fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two thirty-two to twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-two forty-three.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase of custodial supplies for Trail Elementary and P H S. In the total amount of twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Uh, number two, new business is uh letter A is consider approval of offering administrator contracts. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, the salaries for the next school year will be determined upon completion of the spring twenty-twenty-four salary relations. Um, we have Lana Swingholm, principal, Tyler Porshinger, principal, James Catlin, principal. Jim English, assistant principal, Corey Gilchrist, prin- principal, Tim Williams, principal. Matt Bailey, principal quarter time, Lindsay Maxi, principal quarter time. Kevin Derby, curriculum or director of curriculum and instruction, Trina Nichol, special education director. And Marcy Kate's business manager. The recommendation is to approve offering administrator contracts as presented for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of offering administrator contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter B, consider acceptance of certified staff resignations submitted. Uh, Chris K. McGuire, Torington High School Business Education Teacher, Kelly Johnson, Torington Middle School Physical Education Teacher. Brady Fulmer, Torington Middle School Behavioral Interventionist, uh that was as her funded. Ashley Fulmer, Trail Elementary Third Grade Teacher. The recommendation is to accept the resignations as presented effective at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the certified staff resignations as submitted this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter C, consider approval of summer school administrators for the twenty twenty-four session. Uh, the recommendation is to approve Tyler Porshinger as the twenty twenty-four elementary summer school principal. And Jacob Martin as the twenty twenty-four secondary summer school principal. Do I have a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving summer school administrators for the twenty twenty-four session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter D, consider approval of offering certified staff teaching contracts as presented. The recommendation is to approve offering teaching contracts to Clayton McSpatten as a Dean of Students. Todd Weber as a trade and technical education woods teacher. Noni Weber as an English teacher and Chain Buckles as an agricultural education teacher. At the su- at all at Southeast schools for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask just one probably dumb question? What role does the board play, if any, in the hiring of these individuals to fill these slots at the school? Other than just this part right now?
So that would be based on a recommendation to the administrators, and that would be the the role. In some situations, there would be some circumstances where you may be asked to participate in the committee uh on some of the hiring. Typically, that's more the administrator, higher level head administrators of those buildings as opposed to teachers and other uh positions. But there have been cases where uh individuals have expressed an interest to be a part of those committees and certainly welcome to uh. Let me know if there's an interest in the future of observing on that, and we could certainly discuss and see if we can fit that in. Because the value in those committees is is good in relation to seeing that pool of candidates and how that process works.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of offering certified staff teaching contracts as presented this evening, uh all at Southeast schools for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter E, consider approval of memorandum of understanding with Eastern Wyoming College. The recommendation is to approve the memorandum of understanding with Eastern Wyoming College for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving a memorandum of understanding with Eastern Wyoming College for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter F is consider approval of contracting with Solution Tree for in-district professional development. Uh, the recommendation is to approve contracting with Solution Tree for two days of in-district professional development for the leadership team. With Breeze Daniels in May twenty twenty-four in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. This is funded through Title II funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of contracting with Solution Tree for in-district professional development in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter G, consider approval of contracting for out-of-district administrator professional development. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Crafted Consulting P L C for three district administrators to attend out-of-district professional development. For learning impact principal framework during summer twenty twenty-four in the total amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, this is funded through Title II funds and the school improvement fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving contracting for out-of-district administrator professional development through um Crafted Consulting P L C. In the total amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter E, consider approval of contract renewal with frontline education for absence and time solution system. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The recommendation is to approve the contract renewal with frontline education for absence and time solution program. From July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, in the total amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. This is funded through the general fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of contracting or contract renewal with frontline education for absence and times time solution systems. For the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in the total amount of twenty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter I, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of replacement computers for staff and students. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of four hundred and thirty replacement computers for staff and students. And forty-two docking stations from Dell Technologies in the total amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and sixty-three cents. This is funded through the general technology fund, um priced through NASPO purchasing contract. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What is NASPO?
Mike or Marcy, do you want to take that? Um, which one that is explaining? Either one, gone once, gone twice, you know. Call up Marcy, so she can see if she's grabbing the mic.
It's a a purchasing co-op, uh nationally recognized purchasing co-op.
Any other? Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase, uh, four hundred and thirty replacement computers for staff and students, forty-two docking stations. In the total amount of two hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars and sixty-three cents, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter J, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for THS Family Consumer Science Kitchen Equipment. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of one KitchenAid commercial mixer. One Vitamix blender, six Quiznos Food Processors and one express espresso system. From Amazon in the total amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. This is funded through the Perkins Fund. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of uh, approving the purchase. For THS uh, for some sign or kitchen equipment in the total amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter K, consider approval of contracting with Powers Products for skylight replacement. The recommendation is to approve contracting with powered products for the replacement of skylights. At Southeast schools in the total amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. This is funded by entrance proceeds and major maintenance fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving uh, contracting with Powers Products for skylight replacement. At Southeast schools in the total amount of a hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter L, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of a dishwasher. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of a dishwasher for Southeast schools from Webgrass Restaurant Store. In the total amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents. This is funded through the general fund transfer to food service fund. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there currently a working dishwasher at Southeast?
Yes, but this one.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase of a dishwasher for Southeast schools in the total amount of sixteen thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty cents. Please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter N, consider approval of proposed policy revision on first reading. The recommendation is to approve the proposed revision of District Policy seventeen hundred. Tobacco and smoking as presented on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed policy revision uh, for District Policy seventeen hundred on first reading, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter N, consider approval of proposed District Policy Revision on First Reading. The recommendation is to approve the proposed revision of District Policy thirty-six forty-three. Dash fifty-one, fifty-one point one unpaid student meal debt as presented on first reading. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving uh, the policy revision on first reading for District Policy thirty-six forty-three. Dash fifty-one, fifty-one point one, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter O, consider approval of proposed policy revision on first reading. The recommendation is to approve the proposed revision for District Policy thirty-four ten. Written standards of conduct for procurement of federal funds as presented on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed revision of District Policy thirty-four ten, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter P, consider approval of proposed policy revision on first reading. The recommendation is to approve the proposed revision of District Policy fifty-one thirteen point five. Students withdrawing from school as presented on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed revision to District Policy fifty-one thirteen point five, students withdrawing from school, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Letter Q, consider approval of proposed policy revision on first reading. The recommendation is to approve the proposed revision of District Policy thirty-four twenty, purchasing as presented on first reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed revision to District Policy fifty-one thirteen point five, students withdrawing from school, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Oh, damn, sorry. That's my bad. All those in favor of approving the proposed revision to District Policy thirty-four twenty, purchasing as presented on first reading, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Item carries. Number three, topics for discussion. Uh, this is the time for board members to seek input for each other on timely topics. Anybody have anything they wish to visit about this evening?
I would like to s- to be able to possibly revisit and reconsider um. The acknowledgement or the celebration of um. Of our districts um. Teams, whether it be football teams. Debate teams. Um, whoever it is. Um, in acknowledging and validating their accomplishments in the board, uh, at the board meetings. Um, I know that in previous years, some of the concern was having them come in and it. The length of the meeting because of so many. But I feel that not acknowledging some of the accomplishments um. Doesn't it? I I think we are a mess doing that. Um, so I would like to be able to come up with some idea, if anybody has ideas. Where we may be able to recognize um, our youth's accomplishments um. Even if it's just being mentioned by an administrator monthly or quarterly. But I think that's important because I think our kids put in the work, not only academically, but I also think that they put in the work um. After school, on the weekends, and it should be recognized. And this year is a good example of um, several people. Several of our kids that should be recognized for their efforts and their accomplishments. So.
So I think um. Couple different things. If if we're gonna do that, we need to figure out what our criteria, I guess, is gonna be. Carlos, or um, you know, recognizing that, are we? You know, if you win a state championship, I I don't know, you know, where where do we? What's the criteria for it, I guess? And I don't know if we need to form like a committee to talk about that or um, something to that effect. Um, I'm. Is that kind of what what are your thinking or where are you?
I I I guess the thing is, is I don't want to give the impression that just state championship teams. Um, are. Those that need to be recognized. I I personally, the effort that is put in. Is where I think at the minimum should be recognized. I mean, to me, it doesn't really matter if you if you you're there and you go to state and you win it. Or you go to regionals and you get, you know, you're you're in the consolation bracket or you just come out for. I think it should be recognized, you know, and and I know that would actually, um, again, there's a lot of of a lot. But at the same time, um. You know, we can just hear maybe from an A D saying, hey, you know, we we went up in numbers, you know, this year's in basketball. Or, you know, the debate team that says, yeah, we had, we went from twenty kids this year to thirty kids. Even if it's just something minor, if you if you feel like it's something that needs to be noticed in a board meeting. Let us know. Because I think that there are um, there are teams out there that. I I think that, you know, they think, okay, we have to win the championships to be acknowledged. And I would like to be able to hear, no, we have, I, we recruited ten extra debate people, whatever it is, right? Um, if that person feels that they need to be recognized, recognize.
I just did some real, my math's not very good, but um. How many, how off? Like during the summer, how many meetings do we have that were not in school? Three, so three months? So roughly, we have how many total schools? Eight? In our district. But like Lango, that's the high school, like. I was just roughly thinking that we could almost do one school per. School year. Would get us really close.
You you mean per month?
Per month, yeah, one school per month. And they can decide whatever, you know, just give someone that. Equal opportunity for each school to. Celebrate their students at some point.
So could we just tack that on to the reports that we already do? Because we already have all the schools coming in. So like tonight with Southeast, they could also talk about. All the accomplishments too, so a little bit of a brag and then whatever they want to report on.
So I was asked about this too, um, because Southeast is just one, you know, state. Uh, I got the plug in at least, um, the Pickles one state. Um, and I guess that where my head went was. Where does it stop or where does it begin? Um, do kids only get celebrated if they're on a team? Do kids only get celebrated if they are athletes, if they are participating in extracurricular activities? Um, do we celebrate kids on the honor roll? Like how how far does this go? Um, because I think that all kids and their accomplishments need to be acknowledged. Um, the other thing was when the request came to me about acknowledging the Southeast girls, it was they need public acknowledgement and I thought, yeah. Is the board the right place for that? Because, you know, there were multiple assemblies, they rode in on the fire truck. They're on the front page of the newspaper. Do they really want to come before the board? I I and and I'm not trying to, you know, downplay it, but is is that what? What they're looking for? I'm not quite sure. But I do kind of worry a little bit about what message we as a board are sending if we only recognize state champions or athletes. Or, you know, only certain teams and so forth. So it it's a can of worms if we open it. Um, and I and maybe this board's interested in that, I don't know, but where does it stop? Where does it begin?
Right, and I guess, you know, that that was, because I I mean, I had the requests as well. Um, and, you know, those same thoughts, I, you know, it is hard. And I guess I'm not necessarily saying it has to be in the in the 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 arena of the board. Um, but as, I I don't know, uh, is it done in individually schools? As far as quarterly or however it is, um, I just want to be able to make sure that. Again, that's why I wanted to revisit and if you needed to reconsider have, because again, I just think that. I do want to recognize academics, okay, but that's not all about. That's not what high school is all about, right? Um, there are activities, it's socialization, it's it's the 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 full circle as far as that's concerned. And I wanted to make sure that e- every opportunity is being given. Um, and again, if there's not going to be a change, doesn't happen, but maybe maybe that's it. Maybe we do come up with a committee to be able to actually maybe to see, are there different options? Does somebody have, um, because I know a few years ago that was the issue. Um, but again, when we know better, we do better, right? So if somebody else has different ideas that have now say, you know what, yeah, this can be done maybe this way, let's try it. I'd like to be open to hear.
Okay, um, we can absolutely set up a committee, but I do have one quick question. Mr. Kramer, how? How do we determine um, who's presenting every month? Yeah, how is that?
It's just sort of a rotation.
Okay.
Just strictly a rotation from the previous year and we've operated on on the rotation basis just to make sure everybody gets that opportunity.
Okay.
One thing, you know, in particular, that makes it even more of a challenge, because I I truly do believe in, you know, acknowledging the hard work and things. You know, and even as we talk to academics and honor roll, the ironic thing that we can always think of is. I can think of a number of students who who receive, you know, Cs and they worked really, really hard. To get that grade too. And and it's like, how do you, as the difficulty of this is, where do we draw that line with our, you know, sixteen hundred and nine students? That all, you know, definitely deserve those accolades because they are all working their tails off in one way or the other. And, you know, it's it is challenging, but it's a great conversation to have because yes, absolutely, we should always be revisiting this, asking that question. How can we do more for our kids? It it's a really good conversation to have.
So I think um. Three, three, four members on a committee and you guys can. Come up with some ideas and maybe come back at a, maybe the next board meeting or a future board meeting and give us some. Ideas on what you think and kind of go from there. Um, who would have an interest in being elected?
I I I mean, I I'll give it, I would actually like to look at it, um. He- here's the thing, I I don't want to actually put another committee. Um, so here's what I'm gonna do, okay? I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna challenge our student reps to start the ball on. What are their thoughts on the possibilities in, do they see with, from your scope? Is there a way to be able to actually accomplish this? Because again, I mean. Worsing it from one lens. And I'd like to be able to hear from others to see, okay, maybe they're looking at it from a different way and maybe they have it, different ideas. Um, so what I'd like to be able to do is first of all, is to be able to maybe. And again, if it's just set up, set up a meeting with them and maybe get some ideas from them before we actually set up the committee. And then maybe at that point, we can bring up some um, some thought to it.
I think that's a great idea. I will just to tag on to that, so it's not just um, recognition in front of the board. I've also been approached about senior nights at the schools. Where only the, again, the senior athletes are are celebrated. Um, and you know, I personally am on the fence about that. I have a senior daughter who plays no sports. And then I have a son that plays every sport known to man. Um, so is she less of a student? Is she less, um, you know. Valued because she doesn't play sports? Kind of feels like that sometimes, you know, when the schools have these these senior nights. Um, and only the athletes are recognized and celebrated. So, um, it's. This is a big can of worms to open, it really is, but I think it's worth the conversation and I think it's important. Like, these kids need to know that they're valued, just like Mr. Kramer said, whether they're getting Cs or As, whether they're on the state championship team. Or if they didn't win a game all year, you know, so I think it's a a good conversation.
Okay, well, I'll leave it up to you, Carlos, to initiate the conversation and we can look at it maybe next month or something. Any other topics for discussion?
The only other thing that I bring up is Mr. Daley uh, invited me to go out to read uh, Reading Across America for Dr. Seuss Week. I think is what it was, is that what it was? Um, what an incredible school and an incredible program out there. Um, Mr. Kramer kind of outdid me and the reading, I could hear him in the other room, but um. That was fun and it was good to see the school and the kids and just all that you're doing out there, so, nice stuff.
Anything else? Okay, letter G, uh, our future meetings, number one, Salary Relations Committee will meet on. Letter G, our future meetings. Number one, Salary Relations Committee will meet on Friday, March twenty second at twelve thirty PM. And on Thursday, April eighteenth at eight AM. Board members serving on this committee are me, Sarah, and Lena. Number two, a work session for the preliminary budget will be held at six PM on Tuesday, April ninth. Prior to the regular board meeting at seven PM. And that is everything. I will turn it over to Mr. Kramer for his report.
All right, I'm going to go on Zoom. Share my screen. And this would be the February. Enrollment data. As you can see, there were a few schools that went up in our ADM. I'm just going to scroll down to the bottom. If they're not a color, it means that they stay the same or went slightly down. As a district, from the previous month, we were slightly up from one thousand six hundred and eight point nine three to one thousand six hundred and nine point one one. From the previous year to year, in February of twenty twenty three. We were at one thousand six hundred and seventeen point nine three, and now we are at one thousand six hundred and eight point nine three. It actually was a little bit bigger gap there at the beginning of the fall, and so that gap has been reduced. We are still, as you can see, significantly higher, like totally larger, I apologize. Than we were in previous years of twenty two and before. And so we still, that three-year average is what we're always looking at. Is that three-year average? How are we sitting? How is that being affected? So the one year that is very, is high is helpful, but this continuation of being around. This is going to help our average significantly, as we're going to still see, even though we were down from last year, a significant increase on ADM. On our three-year average. So that's encouraging. I'm going to jump over to our other shared document in staff changes. As you can see, we have been pretty fortunate to be able to fill these positions. There are still, of course, still opens and we will add to that list as we progress with some resignations and things. But the hiring season is in full swing and as we're kind of going into that process. We've been very fortunate to take a look at our hiring pools and we are in a very healthy position. I know the board has worked extremely hard. In the previous years in making our salary and benefits schedule very competitive, along with the school schedule. Enticing to staff to take a look. And I think that that has had a positive effect on our hiring pool. As we have seen an increase in quality candidates in the pools that we have had for openings. And even some hard to fill areas that we're getting applicants for that in previous years, there have been cases where we were at zero. So that's very encouraging and kudos to the board for that hard work in salary relations and thinking about those things that. I know other superintendents, when I go to meetings, feel rather envious of where we are. Related to some of the things that we're able to offer as a district and feeling quite healthy in our recruitment pool.
Mr. Kramer, why are you not hosting the LFL Elementary Interventionist?
So that one is an S R funded position.
All the other ones have S R fund, that one doesn't.
That might have been oversight.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
No, thank you for catching it. So.
Oh, Littering, I apologize. So thank you for that correction. That is a literacy grant one and with our literacy grant, as we're looking at that total budget. There is some pieces to that where we have to have a certain percentage, certain grade level spans. And to adjust to that, that is the reason for not refilling that position. Fortunately, we're hopeful as the lit grant will be entering its third year this next year. That the state will again apply for the federal lit grant. We would again apply for the state grant to keep renewal of that lit grant that has. Provided us a lot of opportunities in literacy instruction to require. Okay. The other topic that I had down was the Lifespot School Safety App. And just kind of wanted to have a discussion with board members on their, Chief Johnson's presentation. Last month and bringing that up. If there were any other additional questions, we're not to the point collectively as a district. Excuse me, as a county to make that purchase. Once we are collectively there to move forward, that would come in the form of an action item for purchase. But I wanted to give the opportunity not to forget that topic, but bring it up if anybody had any questions or comments or anything. That we need to further investigate before possibly bringing that to your attention on an action item.
How many total subscriptions made it very reasonable? Did it five hundred or?
Yes, that's correct. And that would be M T Y. It wouldn't be just our employees. And so that is very easily attainable. We would be the largest employer on that group, but with the other employers who are interested in that and the other county entities. We should be able to easily reach that price point. I think there would be a lot of advantages. For me, again, I would reiterate. What is always the number one concern is the overwhelming of a nine-one-one call center in regards to that type of situation occurring. And if we can have a strategy for addressing that piece, that's another step in in the direction and combination and working with. All of our strategies that we use within school to prevent those violent situations. And then just lastly, I did want to have Mr. Derby. You may have noticed in a news release from the Wyoming Department of Ed. That we were granted approval of the stronger connections grant and what that kind of means for us as a district. So, Mr. Derby, if you just want to kind of give us a brief synopsis, and I know it can tag along with something else we already heard about tonight.
Selectively Southeast did us a solid. Everything that you kind of heard Mrs. Vogel present about, the leader in me with Franklin Covey. Essentially, they helped write that grant. So we were, we just found out on Tuesday, a week ago today, that the state fully funded us. So it's just, I have four hundred fifty thousand dollars for basically district implementation of. Essentially what what Mrs. Vogel presented on. So we'll be able to have five. In-district trainers where we can sustain that, like beyond the term of the grant. The grant will be the remainder of this year and then two full years. There's two specific projects that that we identified. One is a stronger connection within the schools that we help will increase in in regards to attendance. And also help as far as discipline issues, like a decrease in some of those things. And then the other specific project was a family engagement piece that we also felt if if we can engage the community further. That would also help with also attendance and some behaviors as well. And a lot of pieces, as you heard Mr. Vogel talk about, probably go a lot hand in hand with some of the topics that you've you've been talking about with. Some of your strategic plan and vision and things like that as well. So. Hopefully, we'll get some paperwork on that here very soon from the state and we can formally approve it.
That's good news.
Yeah.
That's, that's good.
That's awesome. How does that work with Southeast since they've already started implementing it?
So they'll be, what they kind of did was a partial implementation based on their availability building funds this last year. So a full implementation will look slightly different in the opportunities for staff development and things. So they will be, of course, a little bit ahead of everybody as that implementation. But it'll work seamlessly as Kevin has worked with Franklin Covey, a strategy to just keep moving forward. How can we? Continue to turn that wheel and the leadership skills. And really, for us, and what I see is just so many opportunities is common language development. Common language about those expectations and the different entities outside of our district. That really focus on our youth and how we can incorporate that language and be using common language, community and countywide. Is just a really great way to move the needle on what kids need and what what we heard in those lessons. Yes, all of us, even as adults. Need to be reminded of those types of things and strategies for ourselves, for for our wellness in multiple different ways beyond. Just the the aspect of math and English. We have that same responsibility to chub on those areas too. That is everything I had. Thank you. I wanted to just note Mr. Derby's work on this. This was kind of a. Kind of negatively it sounds like, but all I'm told, but Mr. Derby steps up to the plate every time in regards to. Working on these things and with Franklin Covey. And I greatly appreciate his work on the grant, along with the administrators' work. In the district and Southeast and bringing it to to the district to to the forefront. So thank, thank you to them.
I agree. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're done.